Good morning, Pueblo. Welcome to the Voices of Pueblo podcast produced by the Pueblo Star Journal. My name is Gregory Howell and I'm really excited because it's your voice, your vote. And of course, we've got an election coming up in early November. So as we did with our last series, this year, we're going to be interviewing all of the candidates for the Pueblo City Council. And this morning, I have our very first candidate, Joe Perko, and we're going to be going into some of the questions. What we're going to be doing with the format is we have three questions that will be the same for all of the candidates, and then we're leaving the last question open. So that'll give each candidate an opportunity to tell us why their vote for them really matters most and what differentiates them from, say, the other candidates. So I'll give you a little bit of an introduction. The candidate interview topics are going to revolve around, one, city budget and priorities, two, public safety and community well-being, number three is city governance and accountability, and then the fourth one, as I said, this is a free kind of question for all the candidates to distinguish themselves. It's your message to the voters. So what makes you the right person to serve on city council? And what's your vision for Pueblo's future? And how you will represent your district and the community as a whole? So we're going to start the interviews with just a brief introduction, a little bit of history about themselves and their district, whether they're a specific district or whether they're at large, and then we'll get into the questions. So, and again, I want to thank the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for supporting our podcast this year, Voices of Pueblo, through the entire year. So we're really grateful for their generous support. So let's start with our introduction. Good morning, Joe. How are you?
Morning, Greg. It's great to be here. This is my first podcast, so I'm hoping I'm doing okay.
Fantastic. It's your first podcast. Well, let's just start with an introduction. Tell us just a little bit about yourself and what district you're actually going to be representing.
So my name is Joe Perko, and I'm running for the District Three seat of City Council here in Pueblo. For those who don't know, that's the southwest side of town. It includes city park, neighborhoods like Aberdeen, El Camino, Sunset Park, Regency, so forth. And I'm just running because I've become very passionate about the local government here in the last couple of years, and I'm willing to try and do my part to make myself be a part of it.
That's fantastic. So what do you do in your regular life other than city council?
So my day-to-day job, I'm an electrician. And I've also, you know, in my course of work during that job, I've worked in a lot of places around Pueblo. I've worked in a lot of historic buildings, a lot of industrial buildings, just a lot of very important places that make our town what it is. And I'm really thrilled that I've gotten to be a part of that, and that I've gotten to kind of see the inner machinations of how, you know, who we are as a community and what really goes into making the day-to-day lives of people here actually what they are.
That's great. That's great. Well, let's look at some of the core questions that we have. And of course, the first one, as we said, looks at the city budget and priorities. And what we're looking for is, you know, your views on Pueblo's fiscal challenges, how would you approach spending priorities, capital projects, and balancing the budget, and considerations for economic development, infrastructure, and local workforce support. So the question that we have is, Pueblo is currently facing budget pressures and decisions around major capital projects. For example, the city's use of the half-cent sales tax fund, infrastructure upgrades, and/or economic development incentives. How would you prioritize spending? And what criteria would you use to decide which projects get funded or deferred?
So if I were to be elected to City Council, I would really like to see city's budget go to some of the, not only the nonprofit organizations that kind of work to help Pueblo without taking anything back, but a lot of the more commercial aspects, the businesses that actually make our town run on a day-to-day basis. You know, I think it's very important. We've always been a town that manufactures things. We manufacture rails, we manufacture commercial coolers, airplane brakes, tire chains. In a lot of other places, they don't really have that sort of, that sort of core manufacturing infrastructure that makes a town economically feasible, where average working people can, you know, scratch out a living. And I just would like to see us be able to bring more businesses like that and maintain the ones we have. I think, you know, it's a kind of trying economic times that we're in. And in times like that, you want to have things that are reliable for the general population. I think we're in a position that we can really have a lot more of that, because we've always been a town that makes stuff, you know? It's a, it's kind of an important part of our history and our characteristics here. So I want to kind of make sure that we maintain that historical part of who we are, and that we expand on it, make it better for everyone. So bringing in out-of-state businesses, starting businesses here in town, just kind of hoping that, generally, we can put our people to work, because as we know, a lot of people are having, you know, struggling to find work right now. And I think, you know, it's the same as everywhere else. And I think a place like Pueblo could be ripe for sort of a, an economic catalyst program that can bring things like that, Pueblo New Deal, if you will.
You mentioned historic, which I think is really important. And we've, we oftentimes hear about this hollowing out of the, you know, the US economy, where we've lost a lot of manufacturing. But, I mean, Pueblo is a tinker town. I mean, it doesn't matter where you go, you know, whether you're a five-year-old or 95-year-old. We're all kind of, it's very, it's very visceral. It's very tangible. It's very much, you know, a part of who we are. We're like a maker city. Everyone seems to be making something at some level. But in regards to the steel mill, we recently had a transition from Everas to Atlas Holdings, which now is the new owner. How do you feel about that? Because many people are really curious whether there, we're going to keep that kind of steel legacy.
Yeah, it does have me a little bit concerned. I'm not really sure on the inner workings of how Atlas feels about our current facility. And I, you know, I hear rumors about the, the way that the national economic narrative is going to affect us here at home. And I really don't want to see anything like that happen. If anything, you know, I don't want to see us become a polluting industrial town, but I'd like to see our steel mill be able to return to sort of a more major economic driver like it once was. Because, you know, with the way things are in the state of the world, there, it kind of plays in locally, there's opportunity, if we're no longer manufacturing things abroad, because it's becoming too expensive, a place like Pueblo could be a really great candidate for kind of reinvigorating that old industrial base that we once had in America and we once had in Pueblo.
Yeah, and actually, you can't build legacy infrastructure like rail, you know? You start talking about rail, steel, all of these things. It's not like you can just turn around and build those things to support that kind of industry. So Pueblo does have some advantages there. Yourself being a young person, what, how, how do you think, and it's again, in regards to the, the local economy, and how we can kind of regenerate this, youth unemployment is really, really high right now. And it's not a Pueblo issue. It's a national issue, and actually internationally, too. How would you try to get some of, you know, like-minded young people like yourselves more engaged in, you know, the city of Pueblo?
Well, I know that we have a lot of really great public schools here. I went through them myself. And they have their ups and downs, but on the whole, we're very proud and we're very committed to making them as strong as they can be. And, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of programs where younger people can get trained in high school and receive college credit, doing it through CSU, through PCC, and so forth, where they can begin the training of a career while they're still in high school and be able to continue doing so after they graduate with a head start, you know, hit the ground running, making money. And so, trade programs through our schools are really good, but you know, it doesn't always have to be trade. There can be other things, culinary, healthcare, et cetera. But we just need to give these sorts of chances to people. We need to have programs that feed people early opportunities to really get, get out into society. Because, you know, the discussion I hear a lot lately is that not everybody wants to go to college, and I think that's very true. And, you know, this changing state of the world with technology right now has shown us that not a lot of the, you know, more conventional, high-profile training jobs really necessarily have a future in our society, because a lot of those things are going to become rendered obsolete by digital technology. So we need to make ourselves positioned to be better at making people who can do the things that machines and computers can't, which we've always been very good at, and we've always been really proud to do. And I think people could be really excited if we have more training programs for things like that, so that we can go forward.
Well, and I think you hit on something there. I mean, you're an electrician, and, and everyone knows. I mean, if you need an electrician, if you need a plumber, if you need someone to come in just to mow your lawn, if you need someone to come in and, you know, do sheet rock, or, you know, whatever it is, small projects, it is next to impossible to, one, find someone, and then to find someone that you can trust, who does good work. So it sounds like some of these training programs might be one of the ways that we could get people. I know Public County High, you know, they have AMAC, the Academy of Manufacturing, Agriculture, and Construction. So there's an example where the high school actually has, they get their GEDs and a professional certificate. Is that something that you think is, is that, that you're talking about, these, these training programs?
No, yeah, exactly. Like, when I went to Central High School, we had welding machining programs, where people got college credit, and they could basically turn a two-year program into a one-year or less by the time they, you know, after they graduated. And there's also just all of our apprenticeship programs available around town for things like electricians, plumbers. Obviously, I went through the electrician program. And they do a pretty good job of recruiting at our local high schools and at job fairs. And we just need to get that out there more, get people, get kids excited about it, make sure that they know about it, because sometimes they just aren't aware, and they could be very interested. And I just think it's a great idea, because jobs like that are very difficult to replace with AI.
This is for sure. So let's shift gears a little bit, and let's look at our next category. The second category is focusing on public safety and community well-being. So we're looking at, you know, approaches to addressing public safety concerns in Pueblo, building trust between the community and public safety agencies, and ideas for reducing crime while supporting prevention, youth engagement, and mental health resources. So the question that we're looking at is, Pueblo has seen shifts in crime statistics. Some property crime declined, but persistent public safety concerns always seem to be surfacing. So how would you address public safety in your district and also citywide? And what policies or approaches do you support or oppose to build community trust in policing while reducing crime?
Okay, so first off, I would just like to start by saying that I've been hearing this statistic floated around a lot lately, that Pueblo is in the top 10 cities for crime in the nation. I think that's a very reductive statistic, because it's based on strictly a per capita basis. You know, if, if all, you know, if you're going by that metric, then some of the smallest countries in the world are also some of the most crime-ridden. And I don't think that's very accurate. You know, of course, we do have crime here, and it is, it has risen in years. You can definitely see it when you walk around town. And that's not something to be taken lightly. But I think it comes from just sort of a more general level of the way the city, the state of the city as it is, when you don't have enough funding to give schools the materials they need, or, in my opinion, a five-day week. If you don't have enough jobs for people after they leave school to be able to make money and keep themselves busy, then you have a lot of just idle populace who tends, and it tends to kind of facilitate a more open environment for less desirable behavior. So basically, I just think we need to incentivize people to be able to work and be able to thrive, so that other people can look at Pueblo and say, maybe that's not as bad as I thought, and I could go there and make a good living for myself and my family, start a career in this or that. And when we have more people moving in, because it's a desirable place to live, the general well-being of the town will improve. You know, I also talk a lot about on my campaign trail about, that I think some of our more vagrant communities, you know, I've, I've spoken to these people, I've worked with some of these people, done volunteer work, and I see a lot of them just, just need a helping hand. It's hard for these people to find housing. It's hard for these people to find employment. If we are able to give them that even on a smaller scale, where they can get part-time work, working to clean up city landscapes, empty lots, things like that, then we can get them into transitional housing, or give them, you know, part-time wages, and then they can begin to build working, like a resume. And just kind of gradually, we help them to help themselves out of the problems that they're in.
You mentioned, and of course, a lot of this needs to be reverse engineered, you know, going back to when we look at our youth and what they're doing. You mentioned that four-day, five-day kind of school week, when you have that fifth day where kids are not in school, and we're looking at our youth. What, what kind of things do you think we could, or what would you recommend, you know, that could help on that fifth day, say Friday, when kids aren't in school? What are some of the ideas, or what are some of the programs that you think might help alleviate some of this unwanted behavior on Fridays?
So, well, frankly, and this is largely outside of the, the scope of a city councillor's responsibilities, is more of a school board issue. But in my opinion, I think there should be a five-day week for students across the board, just because that's how the real world generally operates. I think people talk about how kids are lazy and yada, yada, and, but if we, if we spend, have kids spend their entire 12 years of, first 12 years of school with a four-day week, and then they enter a world where suddenly they have to work five days a week, or six days a week, and they don't, they're disinclined to do it because they're not familiar with it, then obviously, it's going to be a hard obstacle to overcome. But that aside, you know, the, the lack of that fifth day at school is very, you know, it can be very difficult, because parents might need to find childcare for their kids. We have community centers that do help with that, of, of course, and I think we should be offering more funding to organizations like that, because they do a great job, and we have them all over town. But it's just, maybe we could have summer programs or volunteer programs to get the kids more excited, you know, help them learn about their city. They, maybe they can work for the zoo, or they can, you know, go take sort of learning programs at City Hall and kind of get involved in the government very early on. I mean, those are just a few ideas. Really, it's just all about keeping them busy, keeping them engaged, because if they have that entire free extra day of, of the week, and they're not able to be supervised, you know, that's just a recipe for disaster.
Yeah, I know when, when the announcement was made, I think everyone in town, whether you were the mall, whether you were a nonprofit, Boys and Girls Club, it seemed like everyone was calling around and going, what are you doing on Fridays? Where can I send my kid? So I think that's, that's an issue that we really need to look at. And it's, it's actually a huge opportunity, too. So, but let's go on to our next set of questions. So we've got, the third category is city governance and accountability. So what we're looking at in this particular topic is how you view the role of city council in relation to the mayor and other local government entities, thoughts on transparency, collaboration, and responsiveness to residents, and perspectives on proposed changes to Pueblo's government structure. So the question we have in regards to governance and structure and accountability, Pueblo is currently grappling with governance issues, including a recent move by city council to put a new government structure, city manager versus a strong mayor, question on the ballot, and tension between council and mayor. If elected, how would you ensure collaboration, transparency, and accountability in city council? And what is your view of the proper balance of power between council and executive leadership?
So I think that-
That's a full question.
Yes, I know. So I think that the word new, in terms of government structure, is doing a lot of work in that question, because as we know, we had the city manager position for a very long time, and a great deal of our population did not always agree with it. And the well-being of our city tended to reflect a lack of accountability from whoever happened to be in charge. You know, at times, we had good people who were committed to doing the job, and they did it well for a long time. Other times, we did not. Yeah, I think just frankly, we've only been trying this mayor system again for a couple of years now. And I personally think that there should be a separation of the legislative and executive authority, just because I think it should be up to the people. And I think if, we haven't been doing it for very long, so people haven't really gotten to experience the real benefit of being able to reelect someone if they are unsatisfied with the current candidate. I mean, we've only, it's only, we've only been through two mayors, so that's only happened once so far. But frankly, I think personally, when I attend the city council meetings, although most of the members seem to be very well-intentioned in their decision, and mostly, mostly it's based out of frustration with not being able to fully carry through their ideas and their plans, I just don't think that it's really, really the best idea to have both executive and legislative authority appointed from one side. And, you know, it's, it's kind of creating an extra degree of separation between the population and the executive, because first, it has to go through the city council. And so you could theoretically reelect city council members, but that's, you know, that's a whole, that's seven people instead of one, and the terms are spread apart. And, you know, you might not always have people who are on board with what their district is trying to do, and this and that. So I think it's just better to leave it up to the voters, if they, I mean, I guess we're going to find out in November whether the general population wants to keep mayor, or go to city manager, but-
I mean, how do you, how do you feel? Do you have a personal preference? Just because it was the mid 1950s, when really, you know, that we had the city manager position that pretty much carried us all the way up until, as you said, the last two, you know, mayors. But I mean, when you look at the governance structure, do you see any advantages to having, say, mayor versus city manager? I mean, in your own, when you look at, you know, governance and how you would like to, you know, govern the city?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people think it's a, it's sort of an overreach, but I think having the strong mayor, you know, that's what we decided to have, is so that it's, you have your leader of the city administering the various departments over here, and then you have the legislature over here passing the ordinances to carry out and enforce them and so forth. I think personally, the mayor is the way to go. I, you know, it's just how I've kind of felt about it. When I first moved back to Pueblo from college in 2018, that was in the fall, and that was when they first elected to have a mayor. And so my time in politics, being back here, has been largely defined by that. And I've just heard from people that, as I've been kind of paying attention to this sort of thing, that people seem to generally prefer it. It's really just a matter of city council taking the effort to actually work with the mayor. And, you know, it's not always, it's not always easy, and it's not always quick. But doing the right, best thing for the people seldom is. You gotta really hammer out the details and just kind of grind it out, long hours, long nights, and make sure that everybody's on the same page. And ultimately, you come to the best compromise, because it's better to have to, for two sides to have to find compromise than to one side, for one side to just be able to say, we're doing this, don't ask any questions.
Yeah. Well, and at the end of the day, it's all about leadership. I mean, that's really, on both sides. And when you have really good leadership, you tend to find that no matter what the structure is, you know, the city has problems, and they need to be resolved. So problem solving with good leadership is usually. So I've heard arguments on both sides, but, you know, we made this decision several years ago to go back to the mayoral, strong mayor system. So it does seem kind of short-sighted that we're already kind of wanting to go back to the way it was. So it's-
Yeah, no, I think we need to have a little more time to really give it, give some time to make sure that it's what we really want to do. I think right now, city council is just very vitriolic, and it's, they just kind of want to take the, the quick, easy solution out. They always say, leave it to the voters, but we've left it to the voters, and we're in the middle of an administration that the voters chose, so.
Okay, well, we're going to take just a brief break now to have a message from our sponsor.
Homeownership is possible with a trusted partner.
It brings us a lot of joy to be able to say that this house is our own, and that we've poured our hearts into making it our own.
Alyssa and Ryan are among the more than 155,000 people CHFA has helped become homeowners since 1974. It starts with homebuyer education and connecting you with a statewide network of participating lenders. Get started at chfainfo.com/yourhome. CHFA is an equal housing lender.
Okay, we're back after our short break. And now it's kind of the fun part of the, the interview. And what we do with this fourth question is, it's an open-ended question. And basically, you know, why you? So our, our hope is that this particular fourth question really gives each candidate an opportunity to share a message to the voters. So what makes you the right person to serve on city council? And, and in an overview, you know, your vision for Pueblo's future, and how you will represent your district and the community as a whole. So why you, in your own words, why do you believe you are the best candidate for Pueblo City Council? What unique experience, vision, or leadership style would you bring to the role that sets you apart from your opponents?
All right. Well, as we've stated, I'm running for the District Three seat of City Council. Now, this is the southwest side of town, more or less. And this is the part of town that I have lived in for my entire life, as long as I've lived in Pueblo. There's a brief interlude when I left for school for a couple of years, but otherwise, it's been same neighborhood the whole time. And so I'm very, very, very familiar with all of this part of town. You know, it's been sort of my bread and butter my entire life. I, I know where the buildings are. I know who, who lives there. I know who's, you know, what the different neighborhoods are like. It's very important to me that when someone is elected to represent a certain population of people, that they are very connected with that population. And I think I'm sort of uniquely qualified because of, you know, just the network of people I have throughout, and my familiarity with the, the way, the layout, the history, everything, you know? I mean, I can, I could tell you, you could say a certain number block of a certain street, and I can tell, probably tell you where it is. So when, you know, if an incident were to arise somewhere in my neighborhood, I would know about it. I would know probably why it was happening, in what regards. So I just, I guess I, what I'm trying to say is that, because my roots go so deep here, I'm very passionate, and I'm very committed, and I'm very, very, very familiar with how I'm trying to govern. And as part of my, part of my job as a city councillor, I want to make sure that I'm regularly hosting town halls where the people in my district are, can come be available, where I'm available to them, to be able to voice their concerns, and, you know, yell at me, or whatever they feel like doing. You know, it'll be, it will be over by the time this, this recording's been released. But as of tomorrow, I'm hosting the first sort of prototype of this-
Well, this is going to go out today. So this podcast will go out today. So tell us a little bit about what it is you have scheduled for tomorrow.
So it's sort of like, I'm calling it my prototype of the sort of town hall that I'm trying to host. It's just a-
So this is what you envision, so that if you're elected, this is how you would communicate to your constituents?
Exactly. I would do this every, every two months, every three months, maybe quarterly, whatever.
So what do your, what do your neighbors need to know? How can they participate? Where is it going to be, and what time?
It's going to be at the Lamb Branch Library on Thursday. What is that, the-
Tomorrow is the ninth.
Tomorrow is the ninth, at 5:00 PM, from 5:00 to 7:00.
Do people need to reserve, or can they just show up?
Anyone can just show up, and they can sit in, they can listen, they can ask questions. It'll just be kind of a open forum. I'll maybe introduce myself to those who don't know, maybe give a few words. And, and whoever's willing to come and talk to me is welcome to do so. And that's really just the kind of thing that I want to try and make a regular point of my, of my office, because I think that's one of the most important things for any level of government, but especially since I'm running for a district seat, a local seat, like, it's a couple dozen thousand people, you know, that is within the realm of possibility for one person to be able to know what's going on with all of their constituents, and be able to be there for them, and hear their concerns, and try and find out what you can do to make their, those concerns better for their, for their lives.
That's great.
Because that's what's really important to representing people, is just making their lives better.
So I have one question in regards to just, what was the spark? What was the moment when you realized that you needed to run? Was there anything in particular that happened? Did you have a conversation with someone? Did some community members ask you? I'm just really curious, you know, what was that moment like when you go, damn, I need to run for city council? Because not everyone wants to run for city council. It's a beast. So, but what was, what was that? What was the trigger for you?
You know, I can't say there was any one specific moment. Like I said, I've been more or less paying attention to the city government for about six or seven years now, although throughout, like, as I went through my electrical apprenticeship, it's a very demanding, time consuming thing, so you're, I couldn't really run back then, although I had considered it. But really, the thing that I tell everybody is that right now, the world's in kind of state of disarray, and I live my life under a crushing veil of existential dread and anxiety for the future. So running for office is kind of alleviated that a little bit. And as I'm out there knocking doors and talking to people, having these conversations, sometimes they're pleasant, sometimes they're not, but it's just so rewarding to be able to find out what, you know, what people are actually thinking about things. And it kind of, it kind of makes that crushing feeling go away a little bit.
Well, I find, and I find it refreshing, you know, having younger people run for office, I think, is really important. So for anyone that's interested in learning more about Joe Perko and his campaign, he's going to be hosting tomorrow, and that's the 9th of October at 5:00 PM at the Lamb- at the Lamb Library on the south side. And uh, no reservations required, just show up, but it'll give you an opportunity uh, to ask questions of Joe and to learn a little bit more about his style of governance. And since it's his neighborhood, it's his hood, since he can remember. And um, it's a great opportunity for you to um, to, to learn a little bit more. And um, this particular podcast will be going up this morning, uh, just around noon time. So it'll give people about just over 24 hours to, to get some questions together to pose to you. But any last comments, Joe, before we um, put this first episode for the 2025 election, um, to rest?
Uh, well, I just want to say that you don't, first of all, you don't have to be a District 3 resident to come to the town hall, all are welcome. Um, but uh, mostly I'm just really looking forward to who I'm going to get to speak and talk to. And I really want to thank you guys for having this podcast and making us available to the public. I think it's awesome to have uh, local media kind of growing here in our town. Um, I, you know, I love local radio, local TV, you don't see a whole lot of it these days. And it's a, it's a great way to, for a town like our size to really be able to feel like we're one big town kind of in this together, that we have things going on that people can share with each other and that they can kind of be more involved and be active. And that we just get to see that there's, there's things happening here. Because there's a lot more happening in Pueblo every day. Um, there's a lot of opportunity, a lot of chance for growth. And I think there's, you know, if we play our cards right, there could be some really great things happening here in the next few years. And so that's just what I want to help be a part of and help facilitate.
That's really great. And, and, and I've always felt, you know, when you really boil everything down, we have so much more in common than we do different. So I think it's really exciting when we look at where we need to go and what needs to get done. And we do, we have problems. It's like any other city, Pueblo's not unique in its dysfunction. It's a pretty much, uh, you know, something that we're experiencing at all levels of government. So um, this has been really exciting. Thanks again, Joe, for coming in. This is Joe Perko, he's running for District 3 on the south side. And um, this is the inaugural uh, podcast, Your Voice, Your Vote for 2025. We're sitting down with all of the candidates and this is also a call to action. If we haven't reached out to you and you're running for one of the districts or for at large, please reach out to us because over the next two weeks, um, we are going to be doing all of the interviews. And we have some big news with the Pueblo Star Journal. As you all know, we are currently a monthly print publication. And of course, when we release the print publication, we also have a digital version. Well, a lot happens in a month. So beginning on October 24th, we're going to be releasing a second edition of the Pueblo Star Journal. It will be digital, but it will fill in the gaps between our print. So the October 24th version of the Pueblo Star Journal, which will be in advance, of course, of our November print edition, it's going to have all of the updates of all of the interviews of all the candidates. So you'll be able to go directly to our website where we'll have a dedicated landing page. And uh, this particular podcast featuring Joe Perko will be the first in the series. Um, but by the end of uh, the two weeks, we hope to have everyone in there. So everyone who's running, um, all of the voters will have an opportunity to listen to where all of the candidates are in regards to the different topics that we've discussed today. So I want to thank everyone for listening.
Can I just say one more thing?
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead, Joe, yeah.
And I just want to remind everybody that as of this recording, mail-in ballots are coming out in about a week. So make sure to pay attention to your mailboxes and get them in as early as you can, because that makes it easier for the, for the counting.
That's for sure, yeah. No, and we'll have all of the information, not only just on the candidates, but all of the other ballot initiatives, um, both at the local level and at the state level. We'll be having a lot of those available. And we'll give you more information about, if you haven't registered yet, how you register, um, where to get your ballots, um, where to drop off your ballots if you have, you know, a mail-in ballot. And then if you like to vote in person, we have all of that information too. So, but stay tuned. I want to thank all of the listeners for the Voices of Pueblo podcast. This has been a special edition, Your Voice, Your Vote, featuring Joe Perko, who's running for District 3 in the November 2025 election. So thanks again and have a great day.
Thanks for having me, Greg.
You're welcome.
Receiving down payment assistance from CHFA allowed us to expand our options for what kind of houses we were looking at.
CHFA is Colorado's trusted partner for homeownership. Visit chfainfo.com/yourhome. CHFA is an equal housing lender.